Welcome to the Republican Professor. This morning we have with us Karen Humphries. Joining us from Ohio. Is that where you're at?
That's where I am. It's supposed to be forty-four degrees today and tomorrow it's supposed to be seventy.
Wow.
This is spring in Ohio.
What part of Ohio are you joining us from this morning?
Pretty much northeastern. We're about an hour southeast of Cleveland. Pretty much right in between Akron and Canton.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm in the state of California. It was once a great state. I almost said the great state.
Oh, prophesy, prophesy, it's okay.
It is a state. It still is a state of the United States. People forget that.
Yeah.
But that's why we're here to remind people, this is America.
Yeah.
And you deny it if you want, but it's America. It's not a socialist utopia. It's America. Well, anyway, you're our first elected public official on the TRP project. I guess the TRP is redundant. It's like saying ISBN number. The N, the N means number.
Okay. Number, number.
The TRP, the T in TRP is the, so it'd be the, the. Well, you, you are a public official. What is your, what is your title?
I am a Board of Education member for the Marlington Local School District.
How cool is that? So that's a local office, right?
It is. It's a elected public official that is responsible to the state and subject directly to its governance, the state's governance, but also directly responsible to the people who voted in.
Amazing how that works.
Right?
So, how long is your term?
Term is four years, four years. And I was just reelected for my second term.
And how in the world did you get the idea to run for that office? Take us back.
Taking you back. Wow, it's, it's such a long story. So, I mean, do you really want to go on?
Well, start from birth. Start from birth. No, no, start from conception.
Oh, it was long as nine months of my life.
You remember that? Do you remember it?
Um, you know, I think I'm gonna start from, I told you to note and, or I wrote notes. I'm gonna start from the end of my note because I think that leads us in. I, when we talked before, I said that I thought that I really, the theme that I'm thinking, or you actually pulled it out when I said, if you're willing, God will take you there. You know, I, and I joked how you and I, I'm the antithesis of you because you have so much education and, you know, your degrees and I have a high school diploma and that's it. And
High school diploma, really? Wow.
High school diploma, that's it. And, but it is, I'm, I'm the picture of just being willing. You know, I, I just have been willing to go where God leads me. Even as I felt unprepared or unqualified, he has still led me. And I was realizing as I was, you know, putting my thoughts down that he has opened the door for me to be things that I never thought I was qualified for. And what he does is he uses, for me, he's used three things and they all happen to be P words. I wasn't trying to be clever, it just happened.
They're not trying to have one of those sermons, were they?
One, two, three, here we go. It is P. One, two, three, and it starts with P. Um, no, but people have helped me in my, God opened the doors for me, prophecy and purpose. So, I have
People, prophecy and purpose.
Have, is what God has used in my life thus far to walk into his, the things that he has for me to do because in and of myself, I'm unable to do that. And I liked, you know, we talked earlier too, you talked about relationships. He said it's about relationship. It absolutely is. The longer I live, the more I see it. This is about, you know, obviously the, the ultimate Cinderella story of God redeeming us because he wanted relationship with us. That is what he wants us to live in the earth. And demonstrate. So, people as a, he opened the door for me to be a worship leader and he used people in that my husband is an incredible musician. His name is Tony.
What does he play?
Drums and guitar.
Oh, wow.
So, he's just
Nice combination.
Oh yeah, well, he, he was, the original was drumming. That is his highest, in my opinion, his highest skill and, and anointing, playing the drums. And, but then he, you know, learned the guitar. Had musician friends who helped him learn and he's just very motivated and he is excellent at whatever he does. So, so he was
Can I ask you really quick, where do you went to, where'd you go to high school?
I went to high school, me?
Yeah.
At Marlington.
So you are totally local?
I have lived in the same house for eighty-two percent of my life.
Okay, that's kind of an important, I think that's for local office, I think that's an important detail. I'm glad I asked you that.
It really is. It really is.
Did you meet your husband in that town?
No.
You guys go to high school together?
No. My husband is from Akron, so that's about a half hour northwest of me. And I never really went to Akron, right? Not too far. I, and what happened was I, in, I got a job in a law firm in Akron and met a girl in the building. We became friends. She was dating a guy and his friend was my husband. So that's how we met.
Very naturally. So it wasn't like, you know, on some kind of app or something that you had on the payphone around the corner?
They didn't have apps back thirty-one years ago.
They didn't. Oh, that's right, that's right. That's right. Was it dimes or quarters back then? Was it dimes?
It was both, wasn't it both?
Do you, do you remember dimes?
I do.
Yeah, I remember dimes. They were when I was really little. But I remember dimes. Drop a dime. So I know what that means.
Yeah.
But quarters. Okay, so you're totally local, got it. And worship, worship, so the big deal about the worship thing is you mentioned God right away. People might be wondering, you're a Muslim, is that right? Is it, is it Muslim?
No, I am a Christian.
A Christian. Okay, I'm glad I asked. Hold on a sec. See that, I would have never guessed that. Just stereotypically, hold on a sec, Christian. Gotcha. Okay, so sorry. So, so you're a Christian?
Yeah.
And so this is obviously kind of an important deal because you mentioned basically two different angles here. You mentioned God right away. You've actually, you mentioned three things. You mentioned prophecy is one of the Ps and you mentioned being on the worship team. And that's a big deal because you're in front of people and you're kind of on, you have to, do you have any stage fright? Or?
I did. I mean, well, um,
You're on a stage.
I was nervous. I was nervous. But I, but no, I mean, when I, that's the thing, when you're called out of your comfort zone, you gotta get past that place of letting your fear hold you back. But when you get there, even though you're afraid, there is, I felt a fulfillment that I had never felt before.
Now, did you? Is this a big church? How many people go?
It was not a, we, and we're no longer there, by the way, but it was not a huge church. It was maybe two hundred fifty people.
And did you know all of them? Did you know all the people in the
Largely.
Okay, so you're, these are people that are, you feel are supportive of you and they're, they're, if you screw up, you're not gonna, they're not gonna make fun of you at the next potluck or whatever. I don't know. I mean, I'm just asking. Maybe they would, I don't know. If we got some frenemies there.
I mean, here it is. I mean, you know what? People are people, whether you're inside a church or not. And that is, that is a mistake that you make because you think you're completely safe. And then when things happen that you're not expecting, you're, you can be devastated. And yeah. So you have to understand that people are, I mean, grace is needed everywhere. And, you know, you have to be sure of your relationship with the Lord, stay centered there, or you could be, you could be offended so much that you walk away, which is not good either.
How did you become a Christian? How long have you been a Christian?
Oh golly. Um, well, I was raised, my parents were Amish.
Okay, whoa, Amish.
Amish.
Does that mean Christian? Is, because a lot of people might not know, is that the same thing as Christian?
Amish people are, are, yeah, I mean, Christian, absolutely, that is, they, they follow Jesus Christ, you know, as Savior. But again, you know, if that's stereotypical, it's like we talked, you just said, you know, you, people are people. And are there, are there Amish people that are not Christians? Yeah, sure there are. You know, just like there are people sitting in the church, I love Joyce Meyer said years ago, I can go sit in a garage, that doesn't make me a car. So just because I go sit in the church doesn't make me a Christian, you know, it's
And hold on a second, you are a woman, right?
I'm a woman, yes.
Okay, so I didn't know where you're going with this car thing, but I was like, okay. I think you're
I'm not identifying as a car, no.
You are a real woman, right?
I'm a real woman.
You're one of the real ones.
Yes, original, real.
I've heard of those.
They exist. We exist. We're out here.
Vintage. This is like vintage, man. This is like getting some twenty-two ammo from Montgomery Wards. You're just like, dude, this is, this is legit. So, yeah, okay, so, man, you've mentioned Amish now. Most people think of the Amish and they think of an aversion to electricity mainly, right?
Oh, absolutely. We would visit my grandparents, my dad's parents, and they didn't have electricity in their home. So you would get there and at, you know, nighttime would come and they turn on their kerosene lamps. And you sat, you sat and talked. That's all you did. You didn't, you know, you weren't watching TV, obviously.
Did they read books?
They read books and, sure. And you had conversations, that's what you did. They had an outhouse. They did not have an indoor bathroom. This was in Hartville, Ohio.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Okay, so, oh, hold on a sec. Let me, let me pause it really quick. So we were, we were just talking about being Amish and they have an aversion for electricity. What else? Is it the technology they don't like? They don't like gasoline or something? They have horses, I noticed that. But, um,
Right. It's very interesting. So there are different levels of Amish.
Okay.
And so my dad was raised more conservative actually than my mom. So, he, so, or you might say there's more strict Amish. So they might have a horse and buggy, but they will ride in a car. But they won't own the car. So someone can drive them around, but they won't own it.
Gotcha.
And others are, if they own a car, it has to be black. Because, you know, it's very much, you can't enjoy color and vibrancy because your focus will go there. And you'll lose your, you know, piety because you're not, because you're too interested in looking good. You know, like there, it's just very controlled for some. And then you have others that are, they're just, they're Mennonites. Which actually, the Amish came from the Mennonites. Everybody always thinks that the Mennonites came from the Amish because the Amish are more strict. The Mennonites are not as strict, but you actually had a group of people going from the Mennonites who wanted to be more strict and they became Amish. So the Mennonites are, you would walk into a Mennonite church and not, you, you might see some people that, we are coverings, the women, we're coverings. Which my mom did, my mom passed in nineteen ninety-six. And, but she wore a covering her entire life.
Okay.
Saw my dad, you would have never known that he was, had any sort of background, any Amish background, Mennonite background, anything. So it's just, it's a wide variety.
Okay. Now, how does that inform your, your desire to serve local, locally in your office, like your community? Does that pass down to you from the Amish, you think?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, because they, they don't, they stay out of, they don't vote largely. Again, depending on how strict you are.
Do they have guns?
Uh, they do.
Yeah, okay, that's all I needed to know. They have guns.
So they're, they're okay now.
Praise God. You know what? Praise God for them. Do they get mail? Do they, they check the mailbox?
They do get mail, yeah.
Amen. Do they have typewriters?
You know, I don't know.
No?
I don't know if they would have
Not everything is handwritten with quill pens or whatever?
No, not anymore.
Do they have telephones?
They, I mean, a lot of them do have telephones. They have cell phones now. It just
Cell phones?
It, it just depends. It depends on
Pagers?
I mean, pardon?
Do they have pagers?
They, I'm sure they used to have pagers. Again, it depends on how strict you are.
Yeah, okay.
But you do, yeah.
All right, cool. Well, they had guns. I, I, we're friends now. I just need to know that and then
Okay, good.
So they're, all the rest we can deal with.
Okay, good.
They better have toilet paper. If they didn't have toilet paper, I don't know if we could be friends, but
Yes, they did.
Okay. So your mom, was she come from a big family?
She was the oldest of six kids. So actually, that wasn't that huge back then, but I think her mom was a little older when she started having children. She was older than her husband, so
How many siblings do you have?
I just have two, two sisters.
Okay. Now, why did your mom leave the Amish ways? Or did your dad come from Amish too?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So why did they leave the Amish ways? I'm assuming you weren't raised Amish.
I was not raised Amish. We, I began, I mean, until I was four, we went to a Mennonite church. And then when I was, at that point, there were a number of families that left that Mennonite church and started their own non-denominational church. And our pastor was very much a Bible preaching, I mean, a man of the word. And he actually was on, all the way back then, so when I was that young, he was on local television and he had a half hour Sunday morning television show where he just preached from the word. He was just a very good Bible teacher. But that was our pastor. And so I grew up in a non-denominational church from the time I was four on.
Your parents grew up without TV, but then they had a TV for you. What, what changed for them?
Well, they realized that all the rules weren't necessary. You know, it's, it's the difference of imposing outside rules on the heart, you know, it's, which is the basis of scripture, right? I mean, the Old Testament versus new, you know, it's, you can try to follow the law. It's not gonna work. You have to accept grace. And it's, it's the hard issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're leading up to why you ran for local elected office for education. You've mentioned being on the worship team. Tell us again, what, what, what was the upshot of that, being on the worship team? Was that just being in front of, being in front of a crowd or, okay, sorry?
Well, God uses people to open the door for something. I, I spent in this very house that I live in. I spent so much of my childhood, I would listen to, there was a trio called The Singing Rambo's. It's a totally different Rambo than we think of now when we say Rambo. But Dottie Rambo, I don't know if you know that name, but she wrote prolific songwriter for, you know, gospel music. And it was her husband and, and her, and her, their daughter. And they had, so the Big Thirty-three albums, you know, I would play it in the living room, but on the other side of this wall, I would play the, the songs and I would sing with them. And I mean, my heart was one to, you know, worship. And so it was down there, in there, but again, I didn't feel qualified, you know, I'm not Mariah Carey or Slayne Dionne. I don't have that, you know, wonderful voice, so you know, you tend to think, eh, I don't think I'm good enough for that. But God very carefully, and I mean, if I told you every story, we'd be here forever. So we're not gonna be here forever doing this. But, you know, he, he succinctly led me in that. But I, I couldn't do it again without a person. What, so that was my, my husband that God, you know, used to help me with that. You know, I said prophecy, I, that I, I
Yeah, I think a lot of people are gonna be, a lot of people are gonna be wondering about that one.
About prophecy, okay. I'm a mother because of a prophetic word. We were married when I, I got married when I was twenty-six. I thought the perfect age to have a child was twenty-eight. And so at twenty-eight, we stopped doing anything to prevent a pregnancy and I didn't get pregnant and didn't get pregnant. And four years later, still wasn't pregnant. And a woman in my church, who I knew by name and face, but I didn't know her and she didn't know me, I never really probably talked to her. Shout out to Linda, right there. She came up to me and said that she had been praying for people in leadership and she asked God to show them, show her their hearts, the people in leadership. And I was the first heart he showed her. And she had a tear running down her cheek as she was talking to me. And she said, this is your heart. And I thought, okay, pause here, that's my heart. I mean, you know how your mind goes and you think all these thoughts, like in a split second. And I thought, yep, I can believe that because I was in a really terrible point in my life, hard part. I was the only one working because Tony had been laid off from his work and he was desperately looking for a job. And it's not like today, you just couldn't go and walk in someplace and get a job. It was very difficult. So he was looking for a job, couldn't find one. I was, so there was financial pressure there. I was working in a law firm in the marketing department of a law firm. It was a really fun job, except my supervisor was not fun. So it was like, I was having issues there. I was on the worship team and there's always war, I mean, Christians always have, you know, spiritual warfare they're dealing with and there was a lot of warfare there. So I was dealing with that. And then not only that, a year previous is when my mom died, a stomach cancer. So there was like no area of my life that I was like, woo-hoo, this is awesome. I'm having a good time. So when she said, this is your heart, with the tear running down her cheek, I thought, yeah, for sure, that's my heart. And then she said, are you barren? And I was like, like, I forgot that. I've heard the moment. I wasn't even thinking about, but yeah, I can't have a child. I haven't been able to get pregnant. And so she said, well, I've been interceding and I'm telling you, God said, you're going to have a child. And she told me later, her husband, like, you know, kind of freaked her out because he said, what are you doing? You told a woman who desperately wants a child that she's going to have a child? And so she was like panicked.
Did you know this woman?
I, I knew her face, I knew her name from being in church.
Did she have a reputation for making stuff up?
No, not that I knew of. I really didn't.
Or for being, you know, just melodramatic?
No. But here's the thing. She asked God, here's the wisdom in it. She asked God to tell her, give her something to tell me that would make me know it was true. And she said, so she said to me, God said to tell you, you're like Hannah. Well, here's the thing about that is, in the previous years, however long, I had prayed the prayer of Hannah in First Samuel one. Because I didn't, you know, I, I had no capacity to make something happen that I wanted to happen. We weren't going to go the medical route. We weren't gonna, you know, it was just, if this is what God wants, it's going to happen.
For the, for those of you that don't know, the prayer of Hannah, the prayer of Hannah is in the Old Testament. Hannah is, Hannah is one of the first characters in that book.
Yeah.
And, and the story focuses on her wanting a child. She's barren. And she asked God for the child and she makes a deal with God. Do you remember what the deal was that she made?
If you will give me a child, I'll give him to you all the days of his life and he'll serve you.
Yeah. And the child's name she ended up bearing was?
Samuel.
Samuel. Who ended up, what's the significance of Samuel?
He anointed David.
Yeah. And David was the most famous king.
Yes.
In Israel's history.
Yeah.
Or in, in biblical history, probably. In fact, I think that there's a, there's a lounge in the airport in New York that's called the King David Lounge.
Seriously?
Yeah, for, for LL, I think it's for an Israeli airline or something. At least that's what it was in the eighties, you know.
Very cool.
Anyway, so according, according to Kaim Potok's novel, The Gift of Asher Love. I've never been there, but, you know, I was just reading it the other night. I thought it was funny that they named it the King, and probably lots of other stuff has been named after him. We get, we get the name David. The David's a common name. Samuel's, Samuel's a common name.
Very.
Hannah's a common name. A lot of people don't realize those are Jewish names. They come out of the Bible.
Yes.
We don't get them from any other culture. They don't come from any other culture. They come from the Bible, from Jew, from Jews.
It's our foundation.
Yeah, 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 that's right. So a little bit of, so when you say Hannah's prayer and you say it so easily and so quickly, assuming people will know, and that's, that's totally right. I mean, it was common knowledge for a long time, but now we live in an age that's biblically illiterate. And we don't know basic stuff. A lot of people don't know basic stuff. So anyway, I just wanted to spend some time with that. So you had a Hannah's prayer kind of moment with this lady or?
I had prayed it before.
Okay.
And so she was, she had asked God to tell me something that I would know was true. And she said, he said, tell her she's like Hannah. And that I knew it was true. And so she was very specific. She said, I don't know when, I, I have, there's no timeframe that I can give you, but it's going to happen. And, you know, you just need to, you know, basically believe that, profess that and, and go forward with that. And I did. I mean, I, because when you're desperate, you know, you're willing to hold on to a word. You know, you just, if you've got no other, sometimes things, when we are so good at something, when we're so proficient, you know, we, we lose that understanding that it, it really is faith that moves us forward. And so I, I had nothing else but that hope. And so I held on to it. So God sent her to me in mid, in my mid-journey because I had been waiting four years. It was another four years before I got pregnant. So there was the timeframe, we had to wait and have the faith for that. Five weeks into that pregnancy, I miscarried. And, you know, the, the realization, when you think, oh my goodness, I'm back at the beginning again, was pretty profound, but the Lord spoke. I, I just, and, and when he spoke to me, what I mean by that is there was this thought that just came into my heart and was resounding in, in, in my, in my head, in my heart, that the promise wasn't stolen. And I spoke that out to my husband and he said, nope, the promise isn't stolen. We, we agreed. And two months later, I was pregnant with my daughter.
How old were you?
I was thirty-six at that time, so I gave birth when I was thirty-seven.
And what's your, what's your daughter's name? Do you care to say?
I don't, I don't mind saying Grace. Her name is Grace Anne, which Anne means basically grace. So her name is Grace Grace. She is a gem. And it, you know, that goes into something else that I was thinking about with timing, you know, we, we, as I said, I thought the perfect time to have a child would be when I was twenty-eight. Well, that's not up to us. And that is such a good thing. It, it doesn't, it's not an infringement on our rights or, you know, our I don't know, I guess just our rights. I don't know what other word to use there. It is, if, when we trust God and he leads us, it is perfect timing. You know, and my, my, she is such a gem. When I say, she is, she just has such an incredible heart and she always honors me. She honors me so much. She has all along in her life and you know, I've told her often, I wouldn't, I'm, I wasn't the same mother at thirty-seven that I would have been at twenty-eight. And that's a good thing. You know, there was so much more that I went through. And so what seemed to be like this crazy long wait and, I don't know, you know, you could look at it in a bad way. It, it's turned out for good. It always turns out for good. You just, you know, follow along with that, with what God wants.
Wow. So what does this have to do with you running for office?
I'll tell you.
My guess is it has something to do with education and the fact that you have a child now. Well, first of all, did you give this child to the temple? Did you?
It was, that, okay, so that was Old Testament. I know, so New Testament is, I dedicated her to the Lord. And we brought her up, you know, just a really quick testimony that I think of too, you know. God does talk to us all the time. I mean, he talks to us all the time through hearing, you know, for just listening. And I, she was three and I was panicking in my mind, you know, like, Lord, how am I gonna teach her about you? How am I gonna train her to love you? You know, that type of thing. And immediately what I heard, the thought going through my head was, live it before her. You know, it's not about, I mean, obviously we wanna give Bible stories and we want, you know, Sunday school is good. I'm not talking You know, it's not about, I mean, obviously we want to give Bible stories and we want, you know, Sunday school is good. I'm not talking against those things. But that's not going to do it. They, they have to see the example lived before them or they're not going to take it to heart, you know?
True.
So, um, the way that it came about was with my running for office, we're, we're going to get there roundabout. Is that um, when she was three, same around the same time, um, I started thinking about things. Cause this I haven't stated, you might know, cause I know we're friends on Facebook, but my husband is black. So we moved to rural America, um, you know, which was my homeland. But you know, and about a half hour away from where he lives. That, and he was, you know, in a Caucasian community, where again, rural America, Caucasian.
Did he grow up in a black community?
He did. He did in the city.
So was that, was that an adjustment for him?
No, no, because he very much was always embraced. He very much is. He doesn't care what you look like on the outside.
You know, so you're, how did you get over your racism from, from Amish and stuff like that and guns, people who have guns? And you know, Bible thumpers.
It's in, it's in the heart. Everything is about the heart and I, it, it wasn't in my heart because, you know, that's the very thing. My parents, okay, having been raised Amish and having those, um, you know, having been used to one way of thinking and seeing.
Well, the Amish don't have any blacks, right?
Well.
I don't, actually, I don't know.
They, they, they adopt black children. Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
They do so, it, it, and it's different now. It's different now than it used to be, really is.
I'm sure.
But, um, so, yeah, I mean, they just were used to a certain way of thinking. So that was outside their realm of comfort. But I remember talking to them when I went to tell them that I wanted to marry my husband. I said that, um, I said, when I look in his eyes.
Are you talking about your grandparents or your parents?
My parents.
Okay.
I said, when I look in his eyes, I, I can't tell him, I can't marry you because of the color of your skin. That's the outside. It's not who he is. It's not his heart, not his person. Um, and so that is something that, I mean, I've just, I live my life by, it's not about the outward appearance. It's about the heart.
Well, that's, that's like the Bible. That's biblical.
Right, right.
Uh, it's amazing how many people don't get that. That comes from the Bible.
Yeah.
I mean, you'll read the Bible and where does that come from in the Bible? So people would, could chase it down.
Yeah.
Circumcision of the heart, right? Circumcision of the heart. It's from Jeremiah.
Oh golly, now you say that and I can't remember exactly. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, well, the, the God looks at the heart. He doesn't look at the outside. I mean.
Man looks at the outward appearance, but God looks at the heart. It's actually might be in Samuel as well, because.
Psalms, it's all over the Psalms.
It's all over.
It's basically what Proverbs is all about. I don't know, I don't know how you can. I mean, actions are important too. So, so behavior is important, obviously. Like James, you, uh, faith without works is dead. Uses the example of Abraham, uses the example of Rahab.
Right.
Rahab and Abraham both in chapter two, I think twenty, verses twenty-two through twenty-five, I think, twenty-six maybe. I think twenty-two through twenty-five. I'm going by memory here. So Rahab, Rahab, James is the earliest New Testament book and it's probably Jesus' brother.
Right.
Rahab was not Jewish. She was a different race. Using the term race to be roughly coextensive with ethnicity. She would have been a different ethnicity for sure than the Jewish folks that want, wanted to come into. And this is, this story's in Joshua, if you want to read Joshua. It's the sixth book in the Bible. And anyway, yeah, I mean, he uses not only a woman, he uses a prostitute and someone of a different race as an example, parallel to Abraham. Like, you know, I mean, Abraham was like the man, the guy, the main guy, right?
Yeah.
So, um, it just sounded like Donald Trump a little bit. I was like, he's the guy. He's, he's the, isn't he the guy? He's the main guy. Uh, anyway, he, he came from China, you know, I don't know, I can't do, that's about all Donald Trump I could do.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, I know. But, but, okay, so your, your husband, so you're just pelting us with, we, we're trying to get to why you were running for office and you just keep pelting us with like different stuff.
I'm getting there.
Like, and my husband's black. And.
So we have.
I got a prophecy, my daughter and I'm Hannah now and, you know.
So listen, so we, we have.
My grandparents are Amish.
We have a biracial daughter, okay, in this Caucasian community.
Yeah, okay. All right. I see where you're going with this.
So I'm thinking, I'm thinking, okay, so I, I mean, I live in the, in this, in the same school district that I graduated from. And I, you know, and I just thought, how can I be a bridge? How can I make a bridge and make a way for her? Because I don't know, I don't know what, what will be there. I haven't been in the community for a long time. Um, you know, I mean, they're good people. Honestly, they are, but I didn't know what she would face. You know, if there would be anything that she was facing. I'm just, that's a parental thing, you know, and you've got this little child and you're thinking, what's going to? Even if it's just people, you know, not, not liking her or not playing, you know, kids not playing with her, whatever. I don't know. So that was.
Perfectly normal thing to wonder about. Yeah. I mean, no matter what, what, no matter what your child is like, every parent, I think, every good parent wonders about that. Because if there's anything that's a little different about your child, maybe they're really short or maybe they're funny looking or maybe they don't have hair or, you know, because they had a disease when they were a kid or something. Yeah, I mean, you do worry about them standing out because kids can be particularly brutal.
Right.
Right? And actually adults can too. So that's why we know about it.
Exactly. That's why I um, was, you know, asking like, how can I be a bridge? And what happened was there was a meet the candidates night. We had township trustees. There was a, an election coming up. Um, there are three township trustees for Marlboro Township where I live. And um, two of the seats were opening, were open. So there were five candidates. And I thought, I cannot go and vote for somebody and have no clue who I'm voting for. So my sister and I went to.
What year was this?
This was nineteen, oh no. Yeah, no, sorry. Two thousand five.
Okay, we're just trying to track with, and this is after your daughter's born?
She was three.
Okay, so I got, I got you.
So two thousand five, so it's, it's, it was in October, I think. It was a meet the candidates night. My sister and I go. And what they did was, since there were five candidates, they had five tables. And they just, you know, you sat at a, a table and then they just, the candidates would come for ten minutes to each table and then you just switch. And so you got to talk to everybody. It was good format. So as we sat down, I have the thought, well, if we don't ask them the same questions, how are we, we can't compare apples to apple. You know, you can't just have a conversation, different conversations with people and understand what they're about.
So as they. Very insightful.
Well, yeah, I mean, I don't know. It just came to me again. I, I credit God with everything because I'm just, I don't, you know, it, it, everything comes from him anyway. So. Um, so I, they had these little tablets that people had, you know, with their names on it, vote for so and so. So I just took a tablet and a pen and I wrote down three questions. And so as each candidate came, I mean, the first one, I said, well, you know, I have this question and then this question, this question. So we finished up with that candidate. They moved on. The next one sat down. And so I looked around, my sister was at the table, my neighbor and a couple other ladies. And I looked around to ask them if they wanted to ask a question and they said, no, go ahead. So I asked my three questions of the second candidate, same with the third, fourth and fifth. Um, so we, we got a good, you know, understanding of where everybody was coming from. At one point I saw, my sister was across the table from me and I saw the lady next to her, who I did not know, say something to her. And so when we were leaving that night, I said to my sister, I had a really great time. Um, and she said, you know, I could tell, you know, she said you, that you were enjoying yourself. And I said, what did that lady say to you? And she said, she said, you look like a reporter. So I went home and we have this little, it was a little local newspaper still around called the Hertfield News. And um, you could read it in one sitting. It was just eight pages. So I came home, took care of my daughter, put her to bed and that, it was a Thursday and that's when the Hertfield News came. So I opened the Hertfield News and I read it from front to back, because you could in one sitting pretty easily. And on the back, they have the help wanted, uh, notices. And it said, wanted reporter to cover Marlboro Township trustee meetings and Marlington Board of Education meeting. And I called my sister on the good old wall telephone and said, oh my goodness, here's this thing, you know, this reporter, um, they're asking, you know, for a reporter. And I would have been wanting to get a part-time job that I could do when Gracie, at like at night, so that my husband could watch her and then, you know, we wouldn't have to. I wanted to be a stay-at-home mom.
Was it a paid position?
It was a paid position. So she said, you're going to apply, aren't you, my sister? You're going to apply, aren't you? And I said, yes, I am. And she said, you're going to get it. I just know you are. Well, I got it. And so I started covering the township trustee meetings and the Marlington Board of Education meetings. So in no time, I knew the administrators, I knew teachers, principals. And um, so by the time, again, she was three, by the time she was five, I was friends with these people.
Are you an extrovert? Oh, they're, sorry, my voice is in the background. Are you an extrovert?
I'm an introvert, actually.
Now, how are you finding the energy to do all this?
Um, I think.
Interact with all these people.
You know what's so funny is that we just, we just took this test not that long ago, because my, my daughter is, she wants to be a counselor. So um, she, it always takes all these tests. And um, and she, we did this and yeah, I'm an introvert, um. I think the key is if you're an introvert and you it's, again, it's about obedience, going where God places you, but making sure you have the time to get that recharge and get what you need individually.
Yeah.
I love time alone. I love time alone.
Right, okay.
I mean, I wouldn't have to leave my house but about once a week, but you know.
How, how many hours did the reporter job take?
Oh, we, you know what? Because it was such a small, little newspaper. Um, it didn't take, I mean, maybe, maybe four, maybe five. I wasn't, I wasn't making a ton of money. Um, it, but it was, again, it was, it was God's way to get me, you know, into.
Four hours a month or four hours a week or?
Oh, you know, it, it, it varied anywhere from ten to twenty hours, maybe a month.
Okay, alright. So you're getting to know people. Was that the main part of the job is, is just developing contacts and networks and?
Well, reporting on the meetings, because I would, uh, the trustees have a meeting every other week, so every other Monday night.
Go to that and, and listen to it directly and then report what you heard?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, and the, and the Board of Education had monthly meetings. And then as I continued working and, you know, the, the people who own the newspapers, their confidence grew in me, they would send me out to, for other, um, stories. They, they would send me out to businesses, you know, because a business would say, hey, you know, I'd love to have a story, you know, on my, on my business. And so I would go do, um, stories about the businesses. But also Marlington, like anything that, you know, um, they have kids, you know how they have, they sign contracts to, or they sign, um, agreements to play a sport for a college. So they had these signing things that, you know, I would go and I would take a picture and write a little story about that. Um, you know, I started also been doing the sports days, they, where they literally take all this team sport pictures, they line it up in the fall. And, and they have a schedule and they take, you know, everybody, cross-country golf, go on, you know, football, all these things. And I, and I was a photographer too. I would take the pictures and, you know, submit them. So that's a group.
Somebody's listening to this and they don't know what a township is. And should they're, and they're trying to wonder, they're, well, they're trying to figure out what your Marlington is like. Can you describe it for us?
Marlington is a school district that's comprised of students from three townships. So we're all, are close to the Alliance, Ohio area.
A township is a, is like a city or a town? What is it?
It's, it's a, um, it's a rural, okay? If this makes sense, it would be like a rural city.
Would there be like a main street? With like a soda fountain or, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out.
You know what? They're probably, I mean, there are main streets in each township, but um, is there like, we, in fact, in Marlboro Township, we have what we call the unincorporated village of Marlboro. Um, and it's, it really is the main intersection of the township. And um, so you have some, it used to be the, the little city area, if you want to say the little city area.
So this is not suburbs, right? How close are your nearest neighbors from you?
Um, well, I live on about an acre. So my neighbor is next door. They have two acres and I don't, I, I can't tell, I'm not good at feet, telling you how many feet apart we are.
Like, do you, could you just go in your backyard and throw some clay pigeons up and shoot them with your shotgun and not have any complaints?
I don't know if we could now, but you know what? It's, it's you, you know, you have to, if you're shooting, you're probably getting, going to, um, be like, it's probably going to be reported. So you'll get, we, and we do have a police department in our township. Um, Lexington does not and neither does Washington Township. So it just depends on if your people support a police department. And we've had a police department for years.
Okay.
But they would probably call the police and they would come and they would find out what you're doing. If you wanted to do target practice, they would definitely, um, discourage that. Because, um, you know, you have to make sure you're back, that what you're shooting into is not.
Sure.
Is the cure. So and not, and your bullets aren't going to fly somewhere.
Yeah, I would imagine that if people can hear it, that's the problem too, is that it's a noise issue.
Well, you do hear, I mean, when I go on a walk sometimes, because I walk on our road, again, it's a pretty rural road, but we have, you know, you have more and more houses that come in. Um, in Marlboro Township, you have to own two acres now to build a house. So you have to have a lot that has at least two acres in order to build a house in Marlboro Township. That's one of our. So, but anyways, but obviously that wasn't the case when my parents built this house, house, because we're on little less than a one acre. But um, so when I walk down the road, I, I mean, sometimes you hear gunshot. You do, I mean, so.
Does it, does, does it, is it, uh, how do you react when you hear that? Do you, is it just normal or do you just kind of shrug or do you not even notice it or?
I notice it. It's unnerving to me because of the thought of if, if there's a stray bullet. I, I have to be honest. That's, that's the one thing I think of.
So you don't, it's not like you know your neighbors and you know, oh, that's Ronnie over there and I trust him. He's not an idiot. These are people you don't know?
I do know some of my neighbors. Um, I, in fact, you know, uh, we grew up with the people across the street, category from me. Um, we grew up with their children. So she still lives there. Her son lives up the road. So I do know some of my neighbors. My sister lives across the street. So I mean, I do know some of my neighbors.
And you know her?
I do know her.
Um, so do you have, uh, do, does this area have livestock? Is, are there horses, cattle, goats, sheep?
Everything.
Chickens? Is it, it's normal for people to have chickens?
Yeah.
Okay, that helps. And you don't have a horse, right?
I do not.
But it would not be odd for someone to have a horse.
No, we, there are horses everywhere. Yeah, all down, up and down my road, people have horses.
Gotcha. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool. I mean, that's another thing with the, you, you gotta have a good backstop if you're gonna do any kind of target shooting.
Yeah.
Cause you don't want to shoot somebody's horse.
No. Or anybody.
Or their structure, you know, you just gotta, there's so many things you gotta think about.
That's right.
Anyway, okay, I was just trying to get an idea of, of what, what this is like. So this is.
The lay of the land.
Yeah, it sounds like a semi-rural area. It's not exactly farmland, right? It's not like a thousand acres.
We have a lot of, of farmland, but it is, you know, but yeah, there's patches.
I got you. Okay.
You know, yeah.
Okay, so, but you, but it's not so intimate that you know everybody, right?
Not anymore. I mean, it's, it's, it's just a different, the world is a different atmosphere. I mean, it used to be when I was young, yeah, someone moved in. We actually have a duplex next to us. And if someone moved into the duplex, you know, you might take, literally take cookies over and introduce yourself and that type of thing. Yeah, you don't do that anymore. It's, you know, the people come and go and um, yeah, you, but I, you know, there is, there is a foundation, foundational group of people. As I said, my sister's across the street. My brother-in-law's brother lives next to her. Um, and I know the other, there are two more houses than, I know those people through other, other, um, means. And then I, you know, as I said, that my, um, the people we grew up with, the woman still lives there. She's a widow and she still lives there. Her son lives up the street. So there are people in the area that, you know, you still do know well, but not everybody.
Is this an area that went for Trump in two thousand sixteen, do you think?
Um, I'd say, yeah.
Okay, just trying to get an idea of, I mean, you can look that stuff up. You can figure out where, where each location went, how they went. So, and they, they don't mind having a black guy there? People.
No.
People don't say, he's, we are for Trump, therefore no black people. We're just have to educate the people, you know, in my neck of the woods. I mean, I know the answer to the question, but it's amazing how many people are so stupid. They just don't know basic things about America. They, they think that, you know, Trump is racist and everybody that votes for Trump is a racist. And, um.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, believe it or not, I can use that to, to get to, but the whole thing of running for the board. Because that's exactly with, um, you know, in my notes, that a successful board member has to be someone highly involved in the community. And not only, because when, the comments that you said that people think about Trump, it's like, you know, when you. Just listen to a narrative and you're not involved and you really don't, um, get more understanding. You know, you're gonna follow that narrative and just, and believe that without really having experience. So if you get as a, if you want to be a Board of Education member, in my opinion, you need to be highly involved in the community, both inside and outside the walls of the school. So, you know, because there are people that say, oh, you know, they're wasting our money and I want to go do something about that. And so they, you know, they run and they tell people, I mean, we've experienced this. They tell people, oh, they've been wasting your money in Marlington for years and years and years, you know, and we need to do something about this. So I'm running for the board, I'm for fiscal responsibility. They get elected and you have chaos because then they come. Into the system and they've not, they've not stepped inside the school, they don't know what's going, they don't know the teachers, they don't have, they have no empathy for anything going on. Um, they, you know, they don't know what's really happening with education, how complicated it is. How you have to have, you know, follow the state requirements, you have this funding issue, you have all these things happening, you have the community saying this. You've got to put it all together, weigh it all, and then make the best decision you can for decision, for the education of your students. It's complicated and it's hard.
Did you figure this out, how complicated it is and the issue of empathy you mentioned? Um, you mentioned teachers and I think you said empathy right after that. Did you figure that out as a reporter? When you were reporting on it, that's, that's when you figured out, or was this after you ran for office and you figured out, oh, this is really complicated?
No, it started because, I mean, it started because I, I got involved in, with, um, the reporting. And my daughter being a student, my having been an alumni. Um, I was on the Alumni Association Board. So they raise money to give scholarships to graduating seniors, so I was a volunteer with that. Um, I was reporting and being at all these meetings and all these different, um, just, you know, community things that, um, involving the school. And then in two thousand fourteen, I started subbing in the school. As, um, for classified positions like, you know, study hall monitor, secretary, um, classroom aide. And so then I got to see what it was like to be an employee of the district. And that was, um, another eye opener, you know, so, you know, there. If you're real cynical and you stand far back, you think, you know, all those teachers, they, um, they get every summer off and, you know, and. Blah, 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 you can just, you know, fill in the blank. When you're there dealing with all these different kids coming in from all these different angles and it's everywhere, the brokenness. The, you know, different levels, you have high achievers over here, you have other people who barely. Ain't dressed because they don't have clothes. I mean, it's just, you get the dynamic of what they're dealing with and they're supposed to teach them something. There's, and, and they're judged on what they, what they learn, you know? So I had a lot of different angles. So when my friend said to me, you should run for the board very forcefully. Um, I, it was, I don't know, it just went into my heart, I opened my mouth and all I could do was laugh. Because I, I just knew, I think I knew so deep down that it was gonna happen. Because I told God I was willing to do that, even though I didn't want to, I was willing to do it and sure enough. That's what I was supposed to do.
Wow. So did you say you were a teacher's aide or?
Classroom aide, um, for, you know, like special ed kids. Um, which I didn't know that I would want to do that, but it was great.
Now, so you were in the classroom?
I was in classrooms, yes.
And how long were you an employee like that?
From two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, so, um, I was elected. I was elected till December of two thousand seventeen, so three full, two and a half, no.
Multiple years.
Yeah, at least three school years.
Um, one moment. So I didn't, hadn't realized that you had been an employee. Um, and you were inside the classroom.
Yeah.
So that's fas, that makes this even more fascinating to me because you went from a teacher's aide, is that the name of the position?
Right.
What was the name?
Classroom, classroom aide.
Okay, classroom aide.
And subbing, I mean, I just want to make that clear, I wasn't like, you know, I wasn't, it wasn't a hired position that I did every single day.
Oh, okay.
Um, but I, having said that, I did work almost every single day in various positions, I would sub for people, you know, who, wherever.
Where I was going with that was that you, it's not a particularly high up position, it's pretty, on the totem pole, it's. It's, it's close to the bottom, it's close to the ground.
Absolutely.
But it's, you're looking at that, I love the way you look at it, because you. You look at that as tremendously valuable experience because you can see. Exactly what's happening in the classroom and take it in and make your own judgments about it. And the next thing you know, you're running for school board. Which is like the highest.
Right.
I mean, you don't get paid that much as a school board, obviously, but it's not like, I mean, let's clarify what you're getting paid as a public employee, as a public servant. What, what's the school board pay?
I, in my position, where I'm at in Ohio, or in this district, I, we make less than a thousand dollars a year. So about nine hundred and forty, I think it is.
A year?
A year. Yeah. Um, I'm glad you said that, you know what? So that's so funny because I, you know, the very first thing that I started off doing. Was I was working for a woman who had had a surgery, so she was going to be out the first like five or six weeks of school. And so the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. And she was, um, an assistant, like just a, you know, secretarial assistant type person. So I was in the administration office filing and making copies. That was my, my job and then, um, in the afternoon, I would go over to the high school and there was someone who was in a new position. Um, called the, she's the attendance person, but she literally is at the, um, the entrance of the high school. And now, of course, you know, the, the doors are always locked, I mean, you can get into the one area, but then you have to show your.
So different than how we went, when, when I was in high school, the, the doors were not locked.
No, open.
Anybody could walk in, yeah.
Yeah. Well, they can, they can get into the first por- portion, but then it's locked and you have to have your, um, you have, you, we scan. The, um, ID, you have to have your ID and it's scanned, so it's in the computer system, it's, it's checked. For any issues, legal issues someone might have, um, that would preclude them from getting into the building. And, and then, you know, there, uh, a, a name, um, you know, sticker with the name is, is placed on it and. They're supposed to wear that and get into the building. So I was in with that, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, so, um, going back to.
Lowest to highest?
Yeah. What powers does a board member have? Can you fire, can you fire a principal?
Um, no, nothing on your own, I mean, that's a good point to me. Uh, I by myself have no authority. It's only with the other four members, so as the board meets and makes decisions, votes on things. And of course you have to have a majority, so you have to have three people that are for something.
Okay.
Um, the, the CEO of the, of the district is the superintendent.
Can you fire, can the board fire him or her? Okay, that's pretty cool. You go from. Classroom aide. Which is the lowest.
Yeah.
And then you go from that to being able, as long as you have two other people to be able to fi- fire the head guy.
Yeah.
That's pretty impressive. So how did you? How did you do that? And wh- when you were the classroom aide? You said you worked with special education, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Tell us what that means. Means Down, Down Syndrome or what is it, Asperger's?
Could be Downs, could be, it's a variety of things, um, you, you know, they had different levels of function. Um, so you just were, you did whatever you needed to do. Um, and, and it was, I, I didn't think that I personally was cut out for that, that I would want that. Um, I, it was the best time. It was, it was just so fun. I mean, it was so easy. To just really enjoy, those kids loved them. I mean, they just, it was awesome. I really enjoyed it.
How old were they?
Um, I was usually with the high school. I, I started out at, um, so they were anywhere from, yeah, freshman to senior. Um, but I also did, having said that, I just remembered, no, I was, I started off in the middle school and I, it kind of was a long term. You know, if someone was out with surgery, you were gonna be there at least probably five, six weeks. So, um, I was there for, about that for someone at middle school level, so sixth, seventh and eighth grade. And it was a hoot, I mean, just loved it, absolutely did.
So you don't, you don't hate kids with disabilities?
No.
Wait, okay, hold on a second, let me add that to not a racist, hold on a second. Not a racist.
I'm not, not a racist, and you know what? When you wrote that down, you didn't even realize I was married to a black man, right?
Oh, that's, oh, that's true, I forgot, interracial marriage, okay. Alright, so, um. Now, was there a moment in the classroom? That you recall that's, that you thought? I need to be making some decisions around here.
No.
Okay, so what was it about the education board? Tell us about. Was there a particular personality that was on the board that you thought, we gotta get this person out or?
Um, I wanted to help because, yeah, you know, you hit the nail on the head, there was, there was someone that, you know, was involved and. You hope that when someone runs for, for an office and, you know, I had talked to the superintendent at, at that point and he was also, at, at that time, our superintendent. Um, was an alum of the school also, and he said, you know what, there's always a reason someone runs. For the board, you know, and it, um, it can be good and altruistic, but there's, you know, there is just always a reason. It's not just a, you know, hey, gee, I want to be on the Board of Education. It's not just a, you know, sudden thing. Um, and the reason that I wanted to be there was because when my friend said that, she said, you have had. So many different viewpoints of the district. That, you know, you would make a good board member because you, you understand.
What year?
I'm sorry?
What year was that?
That was two thousand seventeen, when she said, you should run. And we were within a really. Like small window of time to pull a petition. To, you know, register to be running at that point. We were just a couple of weeks away and when she said that to me. Um, and then, funny thing is that. There were, there was this group that I, I'm now, I'm aligned with, um, they are very involved, community members, they're parents of students. They, you know, work in the district, um, and they were, um, getting together a group of people to run. Cause there were three seats open that year. And I pulled a petition and when that happened, they actually were talking to me, I was talking to one in particular and he was trying to convince me not to run. You know, maybe, maybe next time, maybe, you know, in two years and that type of thing. And I just, you know, I said, listen, when I feel like I'm supposed to do something, I do it. I, I just do, so I'm running, basically. So actually someone that they had planned to, um, run together. With, in, in the group said, you know what, I really, it is a lot and I'm still traveling with my job, it's okay, I'll step aside.
Can I, can I probe there a little bit more? So was it merely the fact that you felt like you could run and win? That made it, made a difference or was it the fact that you felt like? You couldn't, did you feel like you couldn't necessarily win or you weren't sure? But what was the reason why you decided to run though?
Because I felt like God was telling me that that was what I, is what he wanted me to do.
Did you have any idea of why God might want that?
To help, because things were so difficult.
There was a specific, was, was there a specific thing, the difficulty?
Yeah, a person.
Okay. And this person. Do you want to say who it is or do you want to say the male or female? Do you want to say anything else about the person? Like, what was it, what was this person like? What was the problem?
They, um.
You don't have to say the name, maybe you don't have to say the name, but you could just say. What, the, what the person was like, what, what that made you think this is a problem?
Having their own agenda. So, so imagine that a, a politician or someone in a political office having their own agenda. Wanting their own way. So it wasn't about weighing what was right for education and for the community. It was that I have a stake in something and I'm trying to protect that or, you know. So that was the case of, of what I saw happening and here's the beauty of it. I had seen it the entire time because when I started reporting in two thousand five, that person had just been elected to the board.
Okay.
I had the entire, I saw every board meeting and saw how they acted.
This person's career was vividly in front of you, the whole thing from, so you weren't just relying on gossip. You were, you were relying on firsthand knowledge and so that's why you were so, you were so confident because of that, okay, gotcha.
Yes. So, you know, I had.
This wasn't Russian misinformation, you weren't getting it from memes on, on Instagram.
Right. And you know what? I mean, you're joking and that's great, but it's the truth.
I mean, that's how people do make decisions is they look at memes.
Yeah, and, and just, you know, well, that sounds right to me and that seems to fit my narrative, so I'll believe that and they go along with it and they'll vote for people.
It's amazing how many people, yeah, it's amazing how many, how many memes I see of, are you awake yet, you know, kind of thing and. And I'm thinking to myself, the average person looking at that meme. Might think, yeah, I'm awake, but all you're doing is just looking at a meme, asking you if you're awake. That's not the same thing as doing research or even knowing how to do research. And people say, do your own research, but what does that even mean? How do you?
Right.
Okay, so you, you're going by firsthand account?
Firsthand account, I witnessed it, I saw it and, and, um, you know, just the spreading of, you know. Um, I've noticed one big plot that happens, um, is that, it politically is. You have to be the first accuser. Cause if you're not the first accuser, then you just look like you're retaliating and saying the same thing back. So that's what I, that's what seems to be pertinent to me that I see a lot in politics. That, you know, so the thing that you're, and it's the thing that you're guilty of, I've got to point the finger at you first. Because then you just look like you're retaliating, but it's very much indicative of what I'm guilty of usually, if I'm pointing the finger saying that. And that's what I was witnessing. So there was a lot of accusations and, and divi, it was divisive, it was divisive to the community, it was missing, it was misinformation. It was fake news, you know, constantly out there that, um, and people were believing it. Because they were, they were so far removed, you know, they no longer had students in the district, they didn't have. And that's another thing to, to note here in this community, we are pretty much, um, I mean, at least Marlboro Township, we're, we're a retirement community, basically. I mean, we have low taxes. And, um, and darn it, they want to keep it that way. Okay, who doesn't? We don't want to, we don't want to raise our taxes right, but. The thing is, like, right now, haven't even mentioned this, we're putting a levy, we're, we have a levy on the ballot for May, May third for our district. We haven't had new money in the district for nineteen years. Nineteen years, we're, you know, we got the funding from the state, we have renewal levy.
What do you need the money for?
It's an operating levy, but you know what, if you hadn't had a raise for nineteen years, what do you need, what do you need the money for, right? We haven't.
It's not going to you, right? It's not going to your salary. It's going something else.
It's going, well, we're a service organization, so we pay teachers.
Okay.
Seventy percent goes to sal, yeah, salaries, so. We're, and we have like one of some of the low, I mean, we're about the lowest paid teachers, I don't know if we are the lowest, but we're darn close to the bottom in Stark County, Ohio. Of paid teachers, so.
See the Democrats, the Democrats are listening to this and they're thinking, ah, now I have something. Now I have something against you. I didn't, you know, okay, you have a black husband, I can't use that against you, okay. You don't hate uh, kids with, kids with disabilities. I can't, yeah. All right. The shooting thing, that's kind of borderline uh, shooting in your neighborhood. Um, but you had a concern for safety. I can't use that against you. Ah, low teacher salaries. You hate teachers.
No.
But what you're saying is you got into office because you saw how low the salaries were and you said, I gotta fix that. And you're voting for raising taxes to, to pay, to actually pay these dang teachers so they don't churn out idiots.
And it, and, and you know what? If you, like, if we could, if I could give you a snapshot and put it in your brain and you knew like the whole story, it's so much more complicated than that. We don't have time, but it, it, it's so much more complicated than that.
If it doesn't fit on a meme, then
Forget it.
Cause you had to understand, I'm not, we're going to publish this, but it's really about the meme that goes along with it. Cause that's what people are going to look at. They're going to look at this, this, uh, podcast and they're going to go, I can't listen to that.
Yeah.
I need a meme. So just put it on a meme. You, you're saying I can't put this on a meme?
I
What you're saying, your, your experience, you can't just reduce it to a meme?
No. And I'm telling, I mean, it would be at least a movie, if not a book, if not a, I don't know, maybe a mini series. It is crazy. It's, it's been a crazy ride.
That's actually a good idea. A mini series.
A mini
That's a really good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, what it's like to run and be on a board of education. So you, so tell us a little bit about why, how complicated it is. What are some of the issues that you have to take into consideration when you make a decision?
Well,
How long have you been on the board? How long have you been on the board? How long have you served?
This is my fifth year.
So you won your first race?
I'm, won the first race and then the second. We just, there was four of us running together because um, I've told you, okay, so every other year there's three candidates. And then the following election year, um, it's, there's two candidates for the five member board. But this time because we had someone resign, there were four seats open. I ran with three former board members, so we were all experienced board members and we swept it. Four of us were elected, which is just, I'm told, completely unprecedented.
Last year, right? Last year.
Last November. Yeah.
Okay. And you guys were all on the same team as far as how you look at stuff?
Yes, literally ran together and, you know, you ran our campaigns together.
And you were getting the, all the same dark money from Switzerland accounts and Cayman Island accounts from, from, uh, the Pepsi brothers? Or, or I guess it's the Coke brothers. Sorry, I forget, I forget which one it is. And, um, you, you don't even know what I'm talking about, do you?
I, I, I've heard some of it. I don't know completely to, I'll be honest, but I've heard some of that.
So this is totally grassroots. In other words, you guys, were you guys bootstrapping this? How do you get the money to do this?
You, yep, you asked for money. Um, there are people in the community who, you know, they, they saw the direction we were going and they were concerned enough to say, I'm willing to put the money into it. And it's crazy. It shouldn't cost this, but it cost us about twenty-two thousand dollars.
That's insane.
That is insane.
What does that money go to?
Well, um, mailers. We did mailers. So we had, um, you know, we, we found out who the, uh, uh, voters were in the district and we, we mailed to them. Um, and, you know, with our message.
Like a letter or something?
Well, we had actual campaign cards. Um, we, we one of the people that, that is running, who, who ran with me, who was elected is actually a, a political guy. He lived, um, down, he's from this area, but he lived down in Florida and was this, he was a, an advisor. He had, he started his own um, company and all this. So he, he ran the campaign and, um, did a great job with it. But yeah, we did mailers and door to door. Nothing beats door to door. It's knocking on doors, going to talking to people. Um,
And people actually answer, answer the door?
Amazingly, yeah.
Wow.
They do. Saturday mornings, we would go, um, well, it's all various times to tell you the truth, but we would go out and yeah, people would answer the door and you'd give them your spiel and usually they were nice. Sometimes they weren't. Um, but it, it was effective.
How many people voted for you? Do you know?
Oh gosh. Um, about eight, seventeen hundred, something like that, seventeen hundred, sixteen hundred.
And how many of those ballots did you personally fill out for them?
One.
One? Oh, you're doing it wrong. That's not how the, see, that's not how we do it in California.
I know. I've heard. Oh.
Now, do the board members ru, um, are there districts in the board so that you have your own dis, you're running for a district seat or is it? Everybody's running and just the top five win or how's, or the top three or four, two?
Yes, it's one school district. So there was, there was a total of, um, there were six candidates for the one seat and then for the, the resignation seat, there were four candidates. So there were a total of ten candidates.
Are those different voters that from each other or they overlap? Okay.
Yeah.
You're competing in a way against the other people. Because you have to get the top people have to, I gotcha.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's not like you were just the only one running for that seat in a specific district of the neighborhood or whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, I think in LA, for example, LA city, uh, the city council, I think each council member has a district in the city. So they don't run against all the other members. They, they're, it's localized, I think. I'm pretty sure it's localized.
Yeah.
Okay, well, what? Would you, if someone was concerned about their school district? And the likes, for example, what their kids are being taught about questioning gender, being encouraged to question their gender as is happening in California public schools. What would you say to do about that?
Well, first of all, I would say that you have to live it before them. I mean, it starts in the home. If you don't, um, have a strong, um, relationship with your kids and you don't, you know, um, demonstrate it before them, then they're going to be so lost. Um, if, if there's a concern, I would say go to the superintendent um, of the school and, um, tell them of your concern. The squeaky wheel gets the oil. Um, you know, the, the person who won't give up, um, if you want to volunteer, I mean, you have to have courage um, to speak up about it and, um, you know, keep saying something if you, if you see something wrong going on. It's that simple.
And there could be problems. There could be problems anywhere in America, right? Not just in Democrat areas. There's different problems everywhere, like the area, the issue that you're dealing with is very low salaries for teachers.
Right.
Why do you think that the teachers are paid so low?
Um, I think it's just been, it's been a trend for years. I mean, we are in, again, a rural area with aging, an aging population. Um, the very much kind of like, hey, if it was good enough for me, it's good enough for the kids. You know, that, that don't necessarily engage or, or aren't willing to embrace the fact that no, things have changed so much. Technology has changed, how we educate kids change. And, um, you have to keep up with that or, you know, and you can say, well, it was good enough for me, but what's going to happen is with open enrollment. We didn't even talk about open enrollment. You can go to any school district around. You know, and so if, and if, if that's open to, that has open enrollment. So if you want to send your child to, to another district right next door, you can, and, and they're able to go there.
Competition.
Competition. So you have that competition. So we, we, that's, that's increased. So when you have those changes built in, you know, you, you can't keep doing things the same way. And yet we have. You know, and here we are again, nineteen years later, no new operating money. So.
How does, how does a school get money? Is it based on enrollment for your district?
Partially. Um, there is a funding formula that is recalculated every two years. Um, and that's interesting because it changes all the time. But yes, it's, we call it butt in seat. You know, so you literally how many people are, how many students you have. It doesn't ma, matter that you, you know, um, we have people that homeschool their kids. Well, we don't get money for them because they homeschool them. So they don't even come to the district. They're not counted. It has to literally, they, they come to the, have to come to the school or they're enrolled somehow, even if they're in the program in some other school. It's complicated. But so it's, it's funding like that. It's property taxes largely in the state of Ohio. That's what our levy is for. Um, even though I was going to be all fancy with this too. In, um, Mar, on March twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-seven, it was ruled by the Ohio Supreme Court that is unconstitutional for us to use property tax to fund schools. And the, the Supreme Court gave the legislature a year to change school funding system. Twenty-five years later has not been changed. So if we want new money, we have to impose, we have to put it on a ballot and, and the community has to vote.
How much is the levy for? How much is the levy for?
Seven point six mils, which is like seventy-six cents for one, every one hundred dollars of, okay, let me say this wrong differently. Sorry. It will equi, it'll, will equate to about twenty-two dollars a month for every one hundred thousand dollars of valuation of your home. So, you know, that's not how much your house could sell for. You're taxed on like a third of your valuation. So it's
Oh.
It, it, it's, it's complicated.
So it's a hundred, hundred, per hundred thousand of not what your home could sell for that moment, but some other
They value like, like a thirty. So it would be twenty-two dollars a month if your home was valued at, um, a hundred and, well, I, no, yeah, the valuation was a hundred thousand dollars. It I, I'm not explaining it well and I'm sorry, but yeah, it's a difficult concept. And what we always tell everybody is go to the, the county auditor site and you, it'll tell you, you know, you can push this little button. What's my tax calculator? What's this going to cost me?
If this levy passes, how much will your, your taxes raise?
Um, three hundred and something a, a year.
Three hundred a year? Okay.
At least. I, currently
I can see how that might be controversial in that area.
Yeah. Well, I, it currently nine, nine hundred dollars a year for me personally goes to Marlington. So that would take it up, it would be the most of, of my tax bill and how my taxes are divided up. The most of my money would be going to Marlington because you have township costs, you have your police costs, your road, you know, costs. Um,
Yeah. Well, you don't have sales tax that's funding all that stuff like a lot of places do. So you don't have like a major shopping center where you'd have lots of sales tax coming in.
No, we do have some businesses, but, but no, no, we don't have a, we don't have a city.
So you gotta have a, another way to fund these services.
Right.
And, um, the, the, there's a state income tax, I imagine.
Yeah.
Okay, it's probably not that big though, right?
No, six something, six and a half percent.
Yeah, for rural areas, I, I don't, I don't even, eh, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Because for rural areas, I, I mean, a lot of people don't think about how is it that you can even get the money? I mean, it's sales, people take for granted sales tax.
Right.
And that's, that's the thing about the last two years when they're shutting down businesses. I don't know how it was in Ohio, but in California, there was this sledgehammer approach to, uh, fighting, um, what really was a, a flu kind of, kind of a virus.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, virulent strain. I'm not saying it was, uh, not something to be taken seriously, but to just as a sledgehammer smash your entire small business economy.
Yeah.
Not to mention the people that run those small businesses and pay sales tax. That's what funds the government. That's what
Right.
Without that tax, you can't fund the government. You can't fund firefighters and police officers and and, um, schools.
Right.
People lose their homes. They can't pay the property tax. You know?
True.
Anyway, and, and to say that you, you know, people paying rent don't have to pay rent. Well, but then how are you getting? How's the owner going to pay the property tax?
Right.
I mean, it's like the, the great inflation mentality among Democrats here in California was so intense. And I, I mean, I, I call it that because I've seen the classrooms myself. I've, I've seen the mentality of people that don't study. And they don't study because they think they're going to get an A, even if they don't study and they don't demand excellence for themselves. They get excellent anyway. That's the same mentality that thinks I don't have to fund the government and the government will still give me a check.
Yeah.
To say, it's the same mentality. It's, and it's the meme mentality.
Mm-hmm.
The very short attention span. So you have to have a long attention span to do what you're doing. You've been doing it since two thousand five in one way or another.
Right.
Uh, by being a reporter, by being involved in your community, by living your faith and your witness to your kids, that you're, I'm sorry, to grace your daughter, your daughter.
Yes.
And, um, and in, you obviously impressed people by being even as a teacher's aide, uh, you impress people because the next thing you know, they're, you, you sneezed and the next thing you know, people are saying, hey, you should, you should run. And I don't imagine that happens to too many teachers aides that they, they're approached and say, hey, you should be on the school board. We need you. You guys make decisions about curriculum?
Uh, we approve it. I mean, we have a curriculum director who recommends it. So, I mean, if we had
That counts.
Yeah, yeah.
The approval word, that counts. That's, that's power. Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Right.
And do you actually take time to look at it?
Um, I do, I probably more, I should take more time than I should, I, I, than I do. But I, it, it is, um, you know, it, it so much depends on, you have to have the right people in those positions. And if you do, and you know them and they know what they're talking about, but then the other thing is, I'm friends with a lot of the teachers in the district. And I mean, they will tell me if something's off or weird or, you know, um, and so that, I mean, again, it's that relationship thing and knowing your community.
Much like a reporter. Yeah.
Kind of.
You're getting your sources.
Right.
As we went up here, um, we have about a minute or two left. What would you, uh, what encouragement would you give parents about getting involved and what would you impart to us as far as your advice?
Um, do it. You know, I mean, the days of just sending your kids off to school should be over for you. Um, you know, so many parents will have their kids involved in sports. That's fantastic. I used to kind of not give that a lot of credit, to be honest. Um, but it is powerful because it, it really does build community within, um, your kids' lives. They learn, you know, um, the discipline of a sport and of teamwork. Um, I mean, it's, it, that's valuable. Um, I don't, I mean, you know, make sure there has to be a balance in, in them doing sports and obviously getting an education. But that is valuable. And then the parent's relationship with each, each other is built. Parents' relationship with the staff, coaches, you know, the whole community. You have to get involved. I mean, it just, you just have to. Wherever your, um, your life takes you at whatever time. You know, I was, I always joke, I was an old mom, but that is, that's what happened. You know, like, like I, you go with it. So I did what I was supposed to do where I was. Then I had a child, maybe a little later in life than most people. And, and you know, then I, I got involved in, in this area and I'm, I'm still here. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's okay. Um, so I, get involved, really get involved and try, and try to have empathy for everybody. I mean, see, see the district from as many different, um, viewpoints as you can.
Well, someone might be wondering, I didn't hear from God like you did. You said that, you know, basically God gave you the green light to do this and maybe someone is listening that doesn't have that relationship with God or doesn't. It's not that they don't believe in God. They, maybe they do or they're not sure, but they definitely don't have some kind of prophecy as their P, you know? What do you say to that person?
I say, um, if, if it's something that you, you know, are noticing, there is probably a reason you're noticing it. And, um, you know, that that is an indication of, um, of something you should possibly do, especially if something's wrong. You know, if something's going wrong or you, you see that something is not being done correctly. And I think, you know, I would say have humility and don't go in with accusation. Go in to find out what's going on and then, you know, um, try to go, go with the attitude of helping, not correcting. Um, you know, because that, that there's a difference, you know?
Helping.
Helping.
Really basic. It's complicated, but it's basic.
Right, right.
Karen, thank you so much for Karen, thank you so much for joining us today.
I am so, I, I thank you so much. Like I said, I, I was very honored to be asked. I, I appreciate the opportunity. Love to talk.
I hope that this is the first of many. I hope we check, check in with you regularly.
I would love it.
Cool.
Yes.
Oh.